All right, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Orange County School Board. As I'm sure you can tell by our crowded audience tonight, we have some wonderful things to celebrate this evening, and I think it's a wonderful tribute. I will share with the audience that we have gotten to the point where we try to limit our recognitions to one or two per board meeting. But tonight, we actually have four recognitions that we are going to do. And all the board members unanimously said the same thought I had, which is, you know, it's a wonderful problem when we have this much to recognize in Orange County Public Schools, and when we have bright, shining, intelligent, inquisitive minds sitting before us, and artistic, talented students in front of us, as we're going to hear from in a moment as well, as well as gifted administrators and dedicated, committed community partners and corporate partners. So without further ado, I'm going to dive right in. Tonight, we've invited, as a first of our honorees, an outstanding student as our special guest. She is Elizabeth Tran, and she is a senior at Cypress Creek High School. And you will not only not believe the list of accomplishments that Ms. Tran has, and I'm going to tell you about after she does the pledge in a moment of silence, but I think I'll give you a little bit of preview. You are going to be exhausted by her accomplishments after you hear them. But before I go into that, Elizabeth, if you could, please lead us in the pledge in the moment of silence.
Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth. If you could remain standing for a moment, we're going to brag on you. And we're so proud to have you with us here tonight. Elizabeth is here with us for so many reasons, but first and foremost, for being selected as one of only 10 students in the entire state of Florida to receive a distinguished finalist honor by the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. The Prudential Spirit of Community Awards is the United States' largest youth recognition program, based exclusively on volunteer community service. She has dedicated a lot of time to helping teens like herself realize how easy it is to go green. She started a nonprofit organization to encourage young people to go green and show them how easy it is to make changes in their lives to save the environment. Elizabeth has also received the President's Volunteer Services Award from the President's Council on Service and Civic Participation. She also volunteers for Clean the World Orlando, which is a nonprofit that collects, recycles, and distributes recycled hotel soaps and bottled amenities. Some of her other accomplishments include Miss Teen Florida International 2012, and she represented Central Florida in the Miss Miracle Charity Pageant, which benefits the Children's Miracle Network. And she received the Golden Hands Award by the Asian American Chamber of Commerce, and most deservingly, just last spring, she was selected as a Disney Dreamer-Endure. She also sings, acts, and plays the piano, flute, and tuba, all with a weighted GPA of 5.09. Can you say "overachiever," folks? What amazes me is that Elizabeth is the only human being I've ever met who doesn't need sleep in her life. We also are recognized, I want to recognize, whenever we recognize a student with these type of accomplishments, it always strikes me that none of this happens without coming from a great parental base and a great home environment. And I believe Elizabeth's mother is with her tonight. Ms. Tran, could you stand and let us recognize you as well? And I'm assuming that was your mother, because she had a grin as big as the United States on her face while taking your photo. Elizabeth, I know all the board members would love to shake your hand personally, and we have a small certificate of our appreciation for being such a wonderful role model for your fellow students. You may have been admiring the visuals on the monitor behind my head during the beginning of our meeting tonight, and it's my distinct pleasure to tell you that the work you were looking at and listening to is from our very own Howard Middle School students who attend the Academy for the Visual and Performing Arts. Tonight, we have a group of students from the Academy here to perform a number for us. And while they are taking their places on the floor, board members, what they've asked us to do is we're going to go out and sit in the front seats as well, where they were sitting, so we can watch their performance. We also, before we dive into that, though, want to recognize the school Visual Performing Arts Program for its new and emerging school award from the Arts School Network. As you all know in the audience, and the parents, of course, know, and the board knows, but the new arts magnet program at Howard opened this school year. And according to the Arts School Network, Howard exemplifies solid planning and well-defined goals. I can tell you that none of that happens without inspired administrative leadership and tremendous parental support. So I'm going to ask Dr. Carl Cartwright, our principal at Howard, to please stand and let us recognize you as well. And I meant it literally when I said "inspired parental support." So if I could have all the parents who support this program, please stand, let us recognize you as well. All right, performers, we're all yours.
Hit me with your best shot. Why don't you hit me with your best shot? I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. One way or another, I'm gonna find ya. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. One way or another, I'm gonna win ya. I'll get ya, I'll get ya. You're a real tough cookie with a long history of breaking little hearts like the one in me. That's okay, let's see how you do it. Put up your dukes, let's get down to it. Hit me with your best shot. Why don't you hit me with your best shot? I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Come on with ya, come on, you don't fight there. But that's okay, see if I care. Knock me down, it's all in vain. I'll get right back on my feet again. That's right, hit me with your best shot. Why don't you hit me with your best shot? I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. And if the lights are all out, I'll follow your boys downtown. See who's hanging out. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Why don't you hit me with your best shot? I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. One way or another, I'm gonna find ya. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya. Fire away. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. Hit me with your best shot.
Except, that was better. That was awesome. That was terrific. You know, guys, give yourselves a big hand. That was awesome. And Dr. Cartwright, we have a small certificate of appreciation for you on behalf of the Howard Visual Arts Program and Visual and Performing Arts Program. And again, we want to thank you for your leadership of Howard. Howard has reached heights. It's always been a wonderful school in our community, but it's reached heights that it's never reached before, in my opinion, under the administration of Dr. Cartwright. And this program has been nothing less than inspired, because it's really done a tremendous amount for Howard as well. And I have to tell you, it was hard for me watching that, because I knew some of the performers, and I'm not going to call them out, but some of them I've known since they were one or two years old. And that performance was right in front of me, so I felt like, oh, my God, I'm getting old, you know? Dr. Cartwright, we'd all like to shake your hand. Great programs don't happen like this without inspired instructional leadership and commitment that goes above and beyond a regular 7:30 to 3 o'clock in the afternoon day. I know these teachers go above and beyond and give untold hours. So can I have all the Howard Middle School teachers stand, and please allow us to recognize Mr. Roach.
Yeah, just a couple. As you, I was actually in a community meeting, not talking about the arts. We were talking about facilities, and I recall, one of the questions from the audience was, you know, are we going to include arts in these new buildings, et cetera? It's one of the art teachers, and I said, well, of course, you know, we're big fans of that. But I'm saying that because I think that the teachers of the arts are our biggest advocates for kids, and they continue to remind us that, for all of the data people in the world, that there's lots of data that supports children's academic progress attached to the arts. And I just want to tell you how I read that. As a matter of fact, he sent me a link, and I copied it out in color. I'll be happy to share it with board members if you don't have that. Be happy to share it with our superintendent, Dr. Jarrah, if you don't have that. But it's right in there, the research clearly shows that these types of classes, these arts and performing arts, help kids learn better, period, over and out. And that needs to be really drilled into this whole child education that sometimes I think we lose sight of. So I want to tell you how much I appreciate watching this. I think everybody in this room had a big smile, and I want to tell you that although Howard is not in District 3, it is right across the street, and some of the folks in my community go to Howard, and I've visited this school. And Dr. Cartwright, I just have to tell you, your enthusiasm is just off the charts. I mean, whenever I see Carl coming around, I know I need to slide off about 10 or 15 minutes, because I'm not getting away from it very quickly. He really loves to talk about his school. On the day I took the two parents over there, I thought we were going for a 20-minute meeting. I swear to goodness, it was an hour and a half. I finally had to leave. I left them there. But he loves to talk about his school, and he tells me tonight that now this school is almost at capacity, which is very, very, very unusual for Howard. It's always been kind of struggling with the numbers, not anymore. And why? Well, first of all, I think Mr. Carl and the faculty there is terrific, and this is a faculty that fights for their school, by the way. I've seen these faces in this boardroom before. But it's also because that they've got that performing arts element, and that attracts parents, because they know. So I just want to tell you how proud I am of Howard Middle School, all the faculty, the principal, and all you kids out there. Thanks a lot for doing your great job.
I can't be outdone, since you are in my district, and I'm so proud of the Howard Rangers all the time. And I took pictures, and you'll be on my Facebook later tonight, when I get on there to post them. As I always do, you guys, I came out to the Halloween performance that you did. Remember the day you were doing the, what did you call that, a flash mob? And I posted the pictures, and people love seeing y'all's pictures. So anyway, and I told my board members, I'm going to tell them publicly, the Howard Middle School Drama Department does a spring performance. They did a fall one, you already missed that one, and they do a spring one, and I want all of you to try and make time in your schedule, because they have many time slots. And Mr. Cartwright is great about sending out the dates. You have never seen anything until you've seen the excitement and the fun on these wonderful children's faces. So anyway, I invite you all, join me. Thanks. Congrats.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, like Ms. Robinson stated, the building isn't her district, but like Mr. Roach said, the bodies come out of our district. And we're just excited about it, but the Cartwright, the entire Cartwright team, his wife, she's a part of Howard. But if you think the students are awesome, you should see their talent show. It is a historical one that they have done for years and years, but lots of talent have come out. But I just love the way they have taken in the children from all of the community, and it really shows that we are a school of choice, because you have opened up the doors for the children in District 5. And you fought like the devil for them, and you're still fighting for them, and as I walked in, everybody, hey, Ms. Caddell, Ms. Caddell. But I just love you. So the performance tonight was just out of sight. What can we say, bravo? But I think the chairman said it well, Ms. Robinson said it well, Mr. Roach, but the Cartwright team and that faculty and staff, they cannot be beat at Howard. We thank you for your talent.
Well, and I'm probably not going to get everything correct, but we'll see how good my memory is. Before the holidays, you were one of the few schools in the state of Florida that partnered with MACI to do, yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus. And they were awesome, and you performed for elementary schools. I had so much fun, you guys were great. And like everyone else has said, if they're performing, go see, it is a special time.
I was just so impressed. I come from a performing arts background, and you all were just amazing. And I have to concur with Mr. Roach's comments, that, you know, your ability to work as a team, your ability to help one another shine in a performance is really what it takes to be successful in business. So these skills you're learning through the performing arts, you'll take and become very, very successful in the future, no matter what you choose to do. So thank you for sharing this with us.
And you all should know that Ms. Gold used to produce Off-Broadway shows and work on Broadway, so coming from her, that means a lot. And now they're all going to descend upon you for a contract. Well, let me say one last thing before we go on to our next honoree. I think the entire board would like to thank the taxpayers of Orange County as well. We have been able to preserve high-quality arts and cultural programs because of the one meal that the voters of this county passed. And because of that, many of these wonderful programs, such as that at Howard and our other schools, have not been cut. So I would ask all the parents to please thank your neighbors and your fellow citizens, because the one meal truly helps us keep programs and magnets like this alive and afloat in Orange County Public Schools, and that's important. All right, we have another special recognition tonight. This one is for Principal Sharon Gabriel from Ocoee Middle School. Ms. Gabriel, can you please come to the podium? You are here once again, because this year, Ocoee Middle School has been selected as an Apple Distinguished School. The high-performing Ocoee Middle joins a shortlist of schools across the country that has been selected for this honor. Ms. Gabriel, as we all know up at this board table, has been among our most innovative leaders when it comes to technology in the classroom. Though it is an honor, tonight is also an honor to introduce the representative from Apple, and I want to thank the Apple Corporation for their support of Orange County Public Schools and for the great learning that goes on in Ocoee Middle School. If I could have Dr. Mark Benno, please join Ms. Gabriel up at the podium, and then if you'd like to make a few remarks, Ms. Gabriel and Mr. Benno, we would welcome that. Are there other representatives from Apple here? Please join us at the podium. And Ms. Gabriel, they're also finally attired in those brilliant red shirts. If you want to have your staff join you at the podium as well, you may do that. Thank you for coming down tonight, the staff and teachers of Ocoee Middle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Jenkins. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Sharon Gabriel and Ocoee Middle School, the teachers and students there. This is really an award about excellence in leadership, excellence in teaching and learning, excellence in finding the ways to bring infrastructure and community to bring, all come together to create just a phenomenal learning environment. And this is not something that was easy to achieve, but it's something that's really easy to see. With a visit, and you can see the videos behind you of the different things that they have done. As part of the selection process, they put together one of the most unique applications you've probably ever seen for any kind of award ever. They literally built a multi-touch book that's completely interactive with videos and elements that show just like student textbooks are moving to, the ability to work with that kind of content, exactly what you see the students doing here. We have an official plaque I'd like to read for you. Sharon, we've got something great for you to hang up in the school. Ocoee Middle School recognized as an Apple Distinguished School for Innovation, Leadership, and Educational Excellence, 2012, 2013, signed by Stephanie Cruella, our Vice President for Education. And this is really just a phenomenal thing. This is a global program. Only 190 schools received this award, and may I note that this is the third year that Ocoee has won this particular award.
As you see on the screen, the amazing things that happened at Ocoee happened because of the people behind me and the teachers and students there. I'm very, very fortunate to be in an environment that has completely embraced progressive and aggressive teaching and learning, and I just couldn't be more thrilled. I work in a place where I'm allowed to lead in that manner, and it's completely supported. So thank you all for your support. It allows us to do the things we love to do for our kids. So thank you very much.
You know, Ms. Gabriel, I think I mentioned this last year, my wife is a graduate of Ocoee Middle School, and sometimes I wish I could send her down to Apple for technology instruction, because I seem to get stuck with it, and I'm inept at it. And Dr. Benno, I want you to know, I saw nothing but Apple iPhones videotaping that performance a minute ago. Ms. Moore.
Ms. Gabriel, I've just been so blessed the last few weeks. I've been to Ocoee Middle three times. This is a very recognized and well-deserved group of instructors, and I had the opportunity about two weeks ago to take some of the City of Ocoee leaders over. And for those of you who don't know the west side of town, City Hall is about two blocks away. And I said, you don't really realize the gem that you have in this city. And so they got to see it firsthand, and it was really, every time I go, it's a new experience to see how you're applying the technology, how the teachers are melding it into the curriculum. The engagement of the students is just incredible. I mean, those children, watching them work on their iPads in the classroom and their iPods, and just the ability to engage the students was just remarkable. And so I so appreciated it about you. You've had the governor there twice, and you had the library redone by another famous celebrity, and it's just been remarkable. And the other day, the last story I happened to, it was not a happy event, but ran into Congressman Webster, and he was talking about the late '90s, when he was House Speaker, having brought then-Governor Lawton Childs down to see the old, what's the word you used, Mrs. Corden? No, you have another word, dilapidated?
Raggedy.
Raggedy, raggedy. She would have, yeah, she would have described the old school as raggedy. And so he talked about how the governor, I did not remember this before my time, how Governor Childs, you might remember, got a line item in for construction and some technology back in the late '90s, which really helped get Ocoee to where it was. And I was, it was remarkable to see him being, the congressman being with pride for what you're still doing, what you've achieved with this award three times in a row. Is it my understanding that, are there any other schools who have actually won this distinguished?
I believe there are. I'm just, I'm not certain, I think there are.
There are, but I know that that's highly unusual, and so it really shows the dedication of your staff. So if anyone liked to, I know she's so busy giving tours to governors all the time, but she didn't seem to mind school board members. If you get a chance to go, you really get the idea of what it's like to have our curriculum 50% digital. I mean, you can really see it happening already at Ocoee Middle. So thank you for being such a strong light and a leader in middle schools. It's just been tremendous working with all of you. Thank you.
You know, great point. I actually, if you know Congressman Webster, thank him, because Ocoee was a statewide demonstration school at the time, and I know because I was serving at the time as Chair of the Education Appropriations Committee. And we came down, and back then, I think it was about 1996, '97, right around then. And he provided almost single-handedly the funding for Ocoee Middle School, so he did a wonderful thing for his community and for Orange County Public Schools. Ms. Gabriel, I know the entire board would like to shake your hand and the hands of your staff, so if you all would like to follow through, and Dr. Benno, I think we'd like to shake your hand and thank you as well on behalf of the school board, thank the Apple Corporation. Thank you, sir. We have our friends with us tonight, and I say friends in a literal sense, because I can think of no better friend for Orange County Public Schools than the Central Florida Educators Credit Union. The representatives from CFE Federal Credit Union are here tonight for a check presentation. We've already taken the photo for it earlier, made possible through the My CFE for Schools debit program. And through this program, Central Florida Educators donates $0.05 to the district every time a My CFE for Schools debit card is used for a signature-based purpose. We're very, very proud to welcome and introduce the President and CEO of Central Florida Educators Credit Union, Mr. Joseph Melbourne is with us tonight. Mr. Melbourne, welcome. Joined along with his senior management team, Senior Vice President of Information Services, Mr. Kevin Dougherty, and Vice President of Marketing, Suzanne Dush, and Public Relations Manager, Ms. Nancy Manager, Ms. Nancy Wykavaj. Nancy, where are you? Saw you there somewhere. There you are. Joe, we would love it if you'd say a few words, and I just want to thank you again for all you do for Orange County Public Schools. Members of the audience, you should know, not only this check tonight, but the CFE Federal Credit Union sponsors virtually every event we have. They sponsor our Support Person of the Year Dinner, which is a tremendous sponsorship. We could never afford to do that dinner where we really celebrate our outstanding support persons throughout the district. That's about a thousand-person dinner at a very nice hotel every year. They support the Teacher of the Year Dinner. They support the State of the Schools Address every year. So, they're a tremendous partner, and not only that, but they support all of our teachers in their financial needs. So, Joe, Kevin, all of you all, thank you very much for all you do for OCPS.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. We've had this program since August of 2009, and it started out, actually Dylan Thomas, I think he was here, got to talk to me about it, a program similar to this, and we put our heads together, and we went to Superintendent Blocker and said, "This is what we'd like to do. Like Bill said, we'll give you five cents for every transaction that your parents and members of the credit union have the cards." And it started out with a small amount, and each year it's gotten larger, and this year we have a check for $60,800. And that represents 1,216,000 roughly transactions. So, parents and faculty and staff are very active with the program, and we hope that it continues to grow. So, I have a check for you, and you can do with it what you may. I want to say thank you very much.
it to Rick. Oh, yeah, okay. Good recovery. All right, with that, we're going to take a brief recess.
May I say one thing?
Yes, Mr. Roach.
I have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore.
I can't let the credit union leave without saying this, but kids, this is like, this is like having that uncle or that you don't get to see very much during the year, but they send you a big Christmas present all the time. That's kind of what this is for us. But I have to tell you, when I first moved to Orlando and I graduated from college up in Kentucky, and moved down here to start teaching, my mother told me, honestly, the first piece of advice my mother said, who was a teacher in Orange County, she says, "Richard," she says, "you have to go out and join the credit union. You have to get into the credit union." It's the first thing she told me. And so, I did that. Now, they own my car, my house, that's the credit card that I use, and everybody in my family has an account with them. But I have to tell you, I really have to brag on Joe's units over there at South Orange where I really hang out most of the time. He's got the most fabulous customer service, and those people, I swear, I think, I think they think I'm their uncle. They treat me like that. They're very, very nice, and he's got a really good, not only a contributor to our schools, but he really knows what customer service is all about. So, if you ever want to get reminded of what that's about, just go into the credit union and check it out. So, thanks again, Joe, for all your support over the years.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am also like Mr. Roach, because I joined the Central Florida Federal Credit Union, Educators Credit Union in 1967, and it was over by the Orlando Sentinel in a little, in a little building, and then it moved several times after that. I'm one of the only customers left with just the, on one account, three-digit number and a four-digit number. And every time I go through, they said, "This can't be a checking account, because we don't have anybody with a number that low." Then I always have to go call the manager so they can look it up, which is so funny, but because several of us have been with them so long. But my part, I think that touched me the most was the Board of Directors. And Mr. Melbourne, we were having trouble in a lot of our schools, and especially with the librarians and the books. And he stated about when this program started, but I wanted, I really wanted Mr. Melbourne to come back up, because a lot of the new board members, they're not aware of this. But Mr. Melbourne, I don't know if you could remember this, but you came and asked me, then you went and asked Mr. Blocker, "What can you do to help our schools? We did not have decent books in the library." And he said, "We went to," I think Chief Wilson was involved, "the Board of Directors, and we said, 'If we can get books in the schools in District Five,' and not all of them, but these other schools." He went back to the Board of Directors, and they bought books. Joey, remember that, Rick, remember, they bought books for all of the schools. Then he came back. Do you remember that? And then I said, "Well, we just can't take all the books." I said, "You could give it to other schools." And not only, do you remember all of the, how many schools you've given books to on a regular basis in Orange County Public Schools?
Well, we gave, we gave $10,000 to, what was it? 10 schools, 10 schools a year for five years, which was half a million dollars.
A half a million dollars in library books! And I know the Superintendent Dr. Jenkins came on board with the last continuation of that, but I think we were just so happy. I could not believe that the Board of Directors decided to do that, and it wasn't just the schools that really needed it, and all of them needed it, but it was providing new books for boys and girls, just like young people, like you see in the audience. And that came to more than what he gave tonight. And I thought that was just a little history that you needed to know, a little black history, because basically, most of the money went to the predominantly black schools at that particular time, but then we branched out. So, a little known black history fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to throw in, at that time, I think Rick was Chair, and we did talk a lot about this, and I want to thank him. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Melbourne. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly wouldn't want to pass up the opportunity to publicly say how much we appreciate the tremendous partnership, Mr. Melbourne, Joe Melbourne, and his wonderful team. Every time we've asked him for anything, they always step up and provide for our requests. But I have to tell you as well, the tremendous product and the wonderful service provided by the credit union to its members is really why they continue to grow exponentially. Now, with 185,000 students that we serve and with over 22,000 employees, we believe that the number and those dollars can continue to go even higher, because it's a wonderful product offered if folks are using debit cards anyway to transact their business, and there's an opportunity to help Orange County Public Schools. We believe the more we get that word out and share it, we will continue to see that number growing, because the credit union is indeed a wonderful partner and a tremendous financial institution for this community. And so, thank you again for all of your support to OCPS.
All right, at this time, what I think we'll do is, let's take a brief recess. I have a feeling we have about 30 kids who are dying to go home and do their homework and study and do all that stuff that they love to do every night. So, thank you again for coming down, and have a great evening.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.
All right, let's go ahead and grab our seats again. You know, it's sort of interesting. I always used to joke with Superintendent Blocker, and now a little bit with Dr. Jenkins, that it's sort of a rite of passage that when you get promoted either to AP or principal, you have to sit through a school board meeting, and usually we don't get to recognizing the newly-appointed administrators till we're an hour in. And I always used to say to Mr. Blocker, "Shouldn't we just let them go?" He says, "No, no, no." He would always tell me, "They need to, they need to hear this. They need to see board governance in action. After tonight, they're going to think it's all wine and roses, and all we do is celebrate successes," Dr. Jenkins. But we do have some administrators to recognize tonight, some newly-appointed, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have two tonight, actually. First, I'd like to introduce Tamira Hutchinson. She is Instructional Support Teacher at Olympia High School. She will become the new Assistant Principal at Ocoee High School.
Thank you. I'm very humbled and honored to be here. I want to thank you, Chairman Sublet. I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Moore today. It was a pleasure, and I want to thank the rest of the board members. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jara, Dr. Williams, Mr. Moody, and the West Learning Community for this opportunity. I want to thank my former administrators who helped groom me to be the person that I am today, Ms. Gibson Link, Guy Swenson, Sasha Russ, Nick Zambry, and Ava Green, wonderful staff at Olympia High School. I want to thank my new family at Ocoee High School, Mr. Bill Floyd, and I look forward to starting with them tomorrow. I would like to thank my wonderful husband, the best husband in the world, Dwight Hutchison, who stepped out, and my children, and my two adorable children who supported me, they were here too, through this process. And again, I'm just thankful and honored, and I look forward to starting with Ocoee High School and joining their family tomorrow.
Next, we have Melanie Simmons, who is the Instructional Support Teacher for Advanced Studies. She will become Assistant Principal at Orange Center Elementary.
Okay, thank you. I've been waiting for this moment. I'm so excited to be here and honored and blessed to have this opportunity. And so, I'll start with thanking Chairman of the Board, Sublet, District Five Kat Gordon, my new board member, and all the other board members in the room, Superintendent Dr. Jenkins, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Jara, and Dr. Williams, and Mr. Moody from the West Learning Community. I'm so excited to be here, as I said again. I'd like to also take a moment to thank all of the supporters that came with me tonight. First, my former administrator in the Advanced Studies Department, Alex Reyes, and my current Director in the Advanced Studies Department, Hillary Buckridge. They both have been super supportive of me as we've tried to grow the Destination College Program, and as well as giving me advice and tips on how to grow myself and my career. So, I'm really grateful for being placed with them. And so, as this new season comes and changes, I get the opportunity to work with Ms. Irving at Orange Center and be a part of the Orange Center family. And after speaking yesterday with Ms. Gordon, I was so humbled, I told my husband I felt like a child again, and I guess I still am compared to what Ms. Gordon thinks and how long she's been here. But I felt so humbled and quieted by all of the knowledge and all of the things that I'm going to be learning about the Orange Center community and the culture, and I had no idea how far back it went. And, you know, I got to be careful and do the right things there and accelerate the momentum, or else I'm going to, I feel like I'm going to get the switch. So, I'd also like to thank my husband, John Simmons, he works at Walker Middle, for being my rock in my support and my spiritual support and all of those wonderful things, and my kids for coming and being loving and supportive as much as a sixth grader and a third grader can be. And my church family, the St. Mary Church family, who came out as well to support me, and even my Girl Scout leader, worker, she can't worker, we're workers together for the girls. They came, it's, you know, my good friend from way back when, she's here, Mr. Valente's here, just everybody that could possibly be here, that could be here, I'm so glad that they came. And as I said again, thank you for this opportunity to serve in the West Learning Community under Dr. Williams and with Ms. Irving.
Well, Ms. Simmons, that was truly classic. And I can tell you, we certainly promoted the right person, because it didn't take her long to figure it out, did it, Dr. Jenkins? Didn't take you long to get to her either, did it, to Mrs. Gordon? Mrs. Gordon.
Well, I've always seen Melanie, but I never seen Melanie other than on the elevator all of the years that she's been in the building. So, I was curious about, why would someone want to leave an elite place like this and go back out in the community? Most of us in the community, we're trying to get in the ELC. So, you know, I had to ask her, Melanie doesn't have to do anything with Ms. Irving, but one thing for us, what I did, I found out that I had been at Melanie's church on many occasions and met her husband and a lot of the parishioners, but I told her that's when I was saved. So, if you all don't know what "saved" means, it's just go home and look it up. And, but I told her, after coming in this building, you know, you all saw my pastor, I don't, I don't know if I'm saved or not anymore, but, but it was so much fun meeting her, because I did not know that she was the pastor's wife. But we had a lot in common, and she didn't know about the history of the building of Orange Center, so I just gave her the history. But Ms. Irving, when she was there, we were remodeling. The board paid to remodel, and I told Ms. Melanie Simmons, she has one thing to do, find the time capsule, that when we built that school in '67, '68, we don't know what we did with it, but Mr. Morris, we do believe we put the front of the building on top of the time capsule. So, her job is some kind of way, go with Geiger counters and find the time capsule so that we can dig it up. But we are so happy, because I've always seen her professionalism, and I knew she would bring a lot, and I asked her why elementary, wanting to go, and she feels that that's her expertise. And after hearing Ms. Irving the other night come before the board, knowing where Orange Center has been, Ms. Melanie Simmons states that she could be the partner, that Ms. Irving needs to take Orange Center back to higher heights. So, I look forward to that team, because they selected each other, and she has 110% of my support. And I love Melanie, because she's leaving the, what do we call this, the Eiffel Tower? And she wants to go back into the workforce. So, God bless you, and your work is cut out for you, and you're going to love the Orange Center staff. She's going to love it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Welcome, Melanie.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Moore.
And Mr. Sublet, I don't know if you wanted to introduce the husband and the children now.
Well, I'm trying to figure out if I should go there. I was going to offer Ms. Hutchinson a chance to do her speech again, because it was so good, and the most important audience didn't get to hear it. But she was awesome.
No, I got to meet Ms. Hutchinson today, and that was a real treat. We're really looking forward to having her at Ocoee High School. I'm just sorry you didn't start last week, because we had a great meeting yesterday at the school, and just love working with the Knights and looking forward to great things. I was very excited, you know, how much I like football, and when they redid the, not me, oh, I've got to not be wearing blue tonight. But anyway, when they redid the divisions, apparently I can now have two state champions, not just one, I can have two next year, because Ocoee and Mackay are now in 7A. So, I was just... So I was just thrilled about that, and so that'd be exciting. And Dr. Jenkins, we have divisions now, we play across three county lines, and so heck, we could, as a district, maybe between Jones is like a four, Nancy, help me out, and I think they're 4A, and I think Edgewater might be 6A, and now we have several in 7A and 8A. So heck, we could, yeah, so we could be champions in lots of sports and having so many different levels. But you'll just love being at Ocoee. I love going to the football games, and you have a wonderful city council and mayor that really love the school, and so it's just a very supportive community and look forward to hearing great things of your success. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Well said. Well, let me just add my final congratulations both to Ms. Simmons and Ms. Hutchinson. The board has heard me say this before, but I always view these promotions as symbolic of our trust in you, and I think that's very, very important for your family and your colleagues to know. We don't put anybody in a principalship or an assistant principalship unless we trust your judgment, we trust your abilities as an instructional leadership leader, and most importantly, we trust the future of our children being in your hands. So congratulations, your family and your friends, and your children should be very proud. And I always like to recognize the kids because this is a long meeting for little ones. Can I have the children stand up of our two new assistant principals so we can recognize them? You guys look marvelous, and you are very well behaved. So with that, you're welcome to stay, but if I were you, I'd go celebrate. Thank you for coming down tonight. All right. What say, y'all, we do for some business? All right, and let me make a couple preliminary announcements. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow speaker form at the board table by Mrs. McGill. Mrs. McGill is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call upon you when the item that you've signed up for to speak comes up on the agenda. If you choose to address the board, you would have three minutes to address the board, and we ask that you, here to Roberts Rules of Order, and keep it pertinent to the subject at hand. Board members, you know, I should say this at the beginning of the meetings, I always forget to and mean to, but we have a monitor in front of us, so if we're not looking at the overhead monitor during the meeting, it's not because we're ignoring the presentation, it's because we're watching what y'all are watching on our monitors in front of us here at the board table. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
There are a couple of changes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, for item 4.01, there are two changes to the addendum, that is the removal of employee SG on the instructional side, as well as employee PL on the instructional side. Additionally, item 14.04 has an adjustment in the final document as discussed in pre-agenda, simply a change in the payment for some actual services that need to be done as a part of that contract rather than the individual entity that we're partnering with having to pay, refund to the district the cost of those services. They are going to pay them directly themselves, so that's a good adjustment. That has been placed in board docs with your refresh. And then finally, item 12.01 was withdrawn due to an item, an error in the financial accounting. Let me assure you, it will be brought back at a later date. Those projects are still closed out, and we are still within budget for Sunridge Elementary and Sunridge Middle.
All right. Are there any questions of the superintendent on the proposed changes? Mr. Rodriguez, did you have something?
Just items 3.01, 3.02, and 3.03, which are all the public workshops regarding the three policies. As you recall, those were withdrawn earlier this week in accordance with our previous workshop, so.
Okay. All right. The chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested by Superintendent Jenkins and our council. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Vice Chair Moore. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as described. All right, we're now on the consent agenda. Board members, any questions or comments on the consent agenda before I take a motion to approve it? You know, I will point out that this is, a couple items just FYI for those watching at home or in the audience, this is Black History Month in Orange County, so your comments are very apropos. And Mrs. Gordon, it is also school counselor a week in Orange County Public Schools, which sadly is very apropos following the Sandy Hook shootings. And I know, Mr. Roach, you've taken a real interest in that issue, and we have a work session coming up on school counselors. Dr. Jenkins, I want to commend you and your team. If you all look at item 6.01, that grant there is to take money and choose students who come from disadvantaged backgrounds and to provide AP courses for them. And the way those students were identified, it struck me when reading that in preparation for tonight's meeting. It's one of the outcomes of universal PSAT testing because we're using that PSAT test as a diagnostic, and that's how we identify those students from lower-income households as eligible for AP courses. So I just think that's important to know, and I don't think a lot of folks out there in the public really know why we're giving every ninth grader the PSAT now, including my own wife. My daughter took it recently. I had to explain to her, it's really for diagnostic purposes more than anything else to see who are missing, who's capable of high- rigor AP courses or honor courses as much as anything else. And then lastly, I want to thank the board for going through the work session last week. That was a six-hour, six-and-a-half-hour work session. I always wonder if it's unnecessary, but each year that we do it, I actually feel like it's one of the most important things that we do. And I say that because item 7.01 is requesting approval of our 2012-13 school improvement plans, which we heard the school improvement plans for our DF schools last week during that six-hour work session. And I want to pay the board a compliment as well, if I may, and I don't mean to put them on the spot, but Dr. Jarrah said something the other day after a meeting that absolutely made my, not just my day, my week, but my month and year. He's had experience in other districts, and he said to me, you know, it's so refreshing to be part of a school district where the board spends as much time as you all do on classroom instructional issues and academic issues. And I probably went on overly effusively because, as you all know, one of our goals is to get it up to where we spend most of our time talking about what goes on in the classroom, as opposed to, if this is lost on the audience, as opposed to all the operational issues the board has to deal with, as opposed to busing and building schools and, you know, issues that really have to do with our day-to-day operations to keep our eye on the ball, which is really what goes on in the classroom academically. So kudos to the board on that as well. Anything else, Mr. Roach?
Yes, we're also approving items tonight that involve at least five elementary schools, construction firms, et cetera. And it brings to mind a document that I received in the office here recently about the number of bids awarded to local firms, which was very high. As a matter of fact, I think it was 100%. And I just want to thank this board for carving that local vendor preference and all the construction folks here. Raise your hand if you're here tonight awaiting this vote on the consent agenda. I hope we pass it for you. But these are also people that really helped and contribute toward that. I think it was a great community effort right there in creating jobs, keeping the money here, helping us to support this future referendum, et cetera. So I'm just very proud of that, and it just kind of struck me tonight, so I wanted to highlight section 12 there.
And Mr. Roach, thank you for saying that. Board members, you should know too, and I'm willing to share with anybody, any of us could create, I actually keep a spreadsheet of who every CM award goes to for the last two years and who every architecture, design, and engineering award goes to for the last two years. And I want to commend Mr. Morris and his team in procurement, Mr. Eugene. I think we're doing a wonderful job of spreading the wealth, not just among our local firms, but among those who have a track record of excellence with us. You know, and every time I get a complaint from one of the vendors in the community that they're not getting enough work, I point out to them, you know what? We got a lot of good construction managers out there, and if you look at who we're giving them to, be patient, you'll get yours in time if you do good work for us. But we really try to spread the wealth in this $3 billion construction program that we're trying to wind down here in the next three, four years. So thank you, Mr. Morris, and thank you, Mr. Eugene, for that. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mr. Roach. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right. We are now on some business we need to do on behalf of our leasing corporation. So at this time, I am going to recess our board meeting and convene the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation if there is no objection to doing that. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated November 13, 2012. Can I have a motion, please, to approve those minutes? It's been moved by Ms. Flynn. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Moore. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the minutes approved. The next item is to approve the resolution of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation authorizing the sale of refunding certificates of participation, Series 2013A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95 million, and the execution of the documents related to that. Can I have a motion to approve that resolution? It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion on the refunding of those cops and the refinancing of those? No? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that resolution adopted. If there is no further business for the leasing corporation, seeing none, at this time, I will adjourn the meeting of the leasing corporation and reconvene the meeting of the school board. All right, we're on item 17, and chugging towards a record for me.
Yes, yes.
6:45, we're almost done. Okay, sorry. All right. It's a number of information items on there for the superintendent. I still have 20 minutes, so the record's busted, okay. Mr. Rodriguez, not that there's any pressure now, take as long as you need, we have 20 minutes. The record for me is 7:05, so you still got 20 minutes.
We have no report from legal, so.
Oh, really? You're just playing to the crowd. All right, superintendent, reports by you, ma'am.
Very briefly, I wanted the board members to know that I was invited to come to the governor's meeting on Thursday at noon. We are of the impression, at least, that the discussion will be around additional budgetary provisions for public education because a press conference is scheduled immediately after that meeting. So I will be in Tallahassee on Thursday, hopefully getting back here as quickly as possible, but Dr. Jarrah will sit in for me during part of that work session. Mr. Chairman, wanted the board to be aware of where I am.
All right, thank you for that, superintendent. I think the governor has a best friend, and I think his initials are BJ. Dr. Barbara Jenkins. And that's a tribute to us, so thank you for all you do for us. We're glad that you're up there and that he's calling on you. All right. I don't believe I have any committee reports. We're now on, any reports by the school board on any items, where it go to any issues you'd like to see agenda? Okay, I have a couple. I'll make this very, very brief. I really have just one and then one request. I just wanted to let the board know, and I hope this doesn't cause anybody heartburn, I don't think it will. I consulted with the superintendent and with Mr. Rodriguez, and also with the chair of our audit committee, Jim Ingersoll. And after he was with us two weeks ago, and I wish I had thought of this a month and a half ago, it occurred to me that it would not be a bad idea, because that's why we have an audit committee, to look into a couple issues. Look into the information that we currently gather from our charter schools of financial information, look into the current statutory scheme for what we are allowed to gather, and to look into whether, in their opinion, there is other financial information that we can demand from our charter schools, including audits or financials as well. And also look into specifically, and it's not really just about this issue, but to look into also specifically the North Star issue, because we have a very professional audit committee, and as you all know, because you're familiar with them, all five of the individuals on that audit committee are high-level controllers or CPAs at major corporations in town. And, you know, it frustrates all of us on this board that when we have problems such as we've experienced with some Orange County charter schools, we know that we have no control over their finances, no control over their operations. The public doesn't know it, so it just occurred to me, you know, we really ought to have our professionals on the audit committee look at it and say, tell us, are there red flags that we can look at in the limited information we get? Can we demand more in terms of financial information and reporting? So it's going to be a team effort. There are volunteers. The superintendent has graciously offered to allow Dr. Bernier to work with Linda Lindsay, our chief auditor, and also Mr. Rodriguez has stepped up and said he'll work with them on the legal aspects of what we can and cannot gather. And Margot was, we actually had a report this morning from Mr. Collins' department. Margot was actually there to hear the report of our Ernst &amp; Young auditors for the school district. By the way, we had another clean audit, again, very, very clean audit of the school district's operations. So I wanted to brief you all on that and frankly, see if that was okay with you all and see if you thought it was a good idea, but I think it would really give a stamp of good practices to what we're doing. And I think frankly, they might even be able to give us constructive ideas on how we can, in the limits that we have, glean some information from the audits and the financials that we get from our charters. So even if we can't stop the practices, perhaps I'm hoping we can find a way to get wind of the practices sooner, and I don't think we're going to be able to, but if we can, so we can march down to the media and say, hey, you need to know this school's paying this principal $250,000 a year, or you need to know dollars are not going into this classroom because it's going all towards a management company. I think we need to start fighting back a little bit more, even with the limits that we have. Mr. Roach?
This is not on that topic. That's just something else. I don't know if anybody else.
Ms. Moore has something on this topic. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to applaud the suggestion and perhaps see if in your agenda, if you think this one issue for me that seems to keep coming up is covered. And are we, can we look at the recourse and the consequences? I know a lot of times it's been very challenging to get the monthly financials, and so we can go on for long periods of time trying to get them to provide those, and I'm just wondering what is available to us to demand the timely submittal of these reports. So that's just one issue, you know, legislatively or legally, I'd be curious to know about because if we're not seeing these financials on a timely basis, it gives more greater opportunity for there to be problems down the road. So thank you for the suggestion in the work session.
Thank you. And Mr. Rodriguez has graciously agreed to help draft what I'm calling, for lack of a better term, a scope letter for exactly what we want them to look at. So, Mr. Rodriguez, you know, will add that to it as well, if that's okay with you. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I do want to commend you on that because that, with you being the chairman of this board, and with all of the bills that are being written, trying to pass, that will give us voice and accountability. Just like you said, we can't run their boards, but they still kind of hold us a little bit responsible. So I think that that is wonderful. And then I believe that you, we were even looking further with, we don't want to forget about the vendors and an accountability system for them. Like, right now, as we may, you know, as we ask the struggling schools to come forward and give us their plan of action, a lot of those vendors are in those struggling schools. So we had asked the superintendent staff also to find a way that we could make them accountable, a data-driven program, so that they can show us that they have made progress with these children. And then that way, the principals are not struggling so, because if they are not connecting together, it's awfully hard to know who is making that child achieve. Is it... Is it both of them? And do we have the data to back it up? Or is it one group, that classroom teacher and the leadership of the administration? Or is it not them and can it be just the vendors that's working with those students? Because we're allowing them to go in. And so, I think some kind of way... I know it would be nice, some kind of way, it was a way, it was a check and balance that the auditor can assist us with that. But I was going to ask, since you came up with that great idea, that maybe the board would allow us to ask you and the superintendent to work out and see how we could make those that are saying that they're helping our children, but yet they come before this board year after year after year after year. Some of them, four years in a row. And they're going down, down, down. And yet, we are paying quite a bit of money to have those students tutored. So, some kind of way, if we could... I don't know if we can piggyback on it, but if you could work it out with the superintendent and see how we could make them accountable within that audit, if we make them accountable for computers and typewriters and classroom furniture, some kind of way, we should have some kind of data-driven program to show who is really helping that child succeed. And if they're saying that that child is succeeding, and then when the EPCAT comes or whatever assessment, that child is on a Level 1. The data is just not... It's not panning out. So, I have a major concern with that, and we talked about it. So, I want to commend you for bringing that accountability system there. And I would like to see us bring it a little bit more to those that are utilizing the taxpayers' dollars to help those students improve. All right? Thank you.
Well, we have... It's a great suggestion, and actually, it fits in well. On March 19th, we're circling back, you'll see on the work session schedule, on a lot of issues that we cracked open last year. And one of the ones we're circling back on is the issue of district teacher tutoring. So, you know, Superintendent, I don't know if you can make a mental note of this, because I'll try not to forget. But when we do that, I think what Mrs. Gordon is asking is, can we develop the data to look at our qualified SES providers? And is there a way to get data on how they're performing as far as student performance? I don't know if that information's available from the state or not. I have a feeling it's probably limited. But we have a lot of them, and it would sure not be... I'd actually like to know, too, who's performing at a high level and who's not performing at a high level. Okay. Mr. Roach, thank you for waiting.
Chair Soblet, do we have students in the audience? Who's in... Is the young ladies and young men? Are you all students from college at all? Oh, you are? Okay. Welcome. The, you know, last board meeting, I made some comments about counselors at this point in the program. And coincidentally, the very next day in the paper, and I sent you all a copy of this, hope you got it, was an article written by the Director of Counselor Education, Stetson. And I thought, wow. It was just perfect. So, if you read that, and I'm sure you heard me, because I'm so appreciative that I see on March 19th, our work session's coming right up. And that's very, very, very important and impressive to me, board members, for having this thing come up so quickly. I've been invited to give the opening remarks for the annual counselor breakfast next Friday. And I'll be sure to ask them to come to listen in on March. And maybe we could have one or two of them say something briefly about the value of counselors, if that so fits into the program. But I'm very excited about it. And thanks a lot for the timely move on that, Chair Soblet.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. All right. Board members, I've handed out the upcoming work session schedule. I think at this time, we've tried to fit all the topics in that you requested. So, if we're missing any, let Ms. McGill and I know. Anything else that board members under item 20 of the agenda that you'd like to discuss or agenda going forward? All right.
Is that the policy thing?
Pardon me?
Is that the policy?
Yes. Yeah, 20. Yeah. Mrs. Robinson?
This is more a question, probably, that Dr. Jenkins, someone could get back with me, probably on an answer. I don't need a work session on it. But I had a parent contact me, and this is not the first time this has happened, where their child's in high school. Their teacher was put on relief of duty for some reason. I don't even know what, but something. And the school did not... And it happens to have been going on for a longer and more extended period of time. The school did not in any way contact the families to let them know what was happening. And I wondered, do we have a policy or procedure in place where we should let the families know what, you know, not the details, but how the school's addressing the situation? And in particular, this was a math. This was a high-level math, Algebra II. They put in a person that's not qualified, a substitute that teaches history, is certified in history, and they didn't tell the parents. It's been a month, and then finally, you know, it's kind of like, oh, the child tells the parent, oh. And the school hadn't in any way really addressed it. So, do we have a procedure policy? Is there something? Do we need something?
We have a procedure, Ms. Robinson. I'd be happy to talk with you about more specifics. In particular, when there is a critical subject area that is missing, there should be either a coach or a CRT or a department chairperson that helps supplement what is needed for those students and certainly helps make certain that the substitutes are prepared and have some lesson plans. And I will be happy to look into the particulars in that school.
They had lesson plans, but Algebra II, if you're not a math-certified substitute, that's tougher to teach with curriculum than...
So, I would have expected that there would be some assistance provided by the rest of that team for those students, and so I can look into the particulars for you. Every substitute doesn't have to be an expert in that area, but the support from the rest of the department or the department chair or the coach is where we would expect the additional assistance to come from. So, I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Now, what about letting parents know?
I have to tell you, we do not disclose when a teacher is on relief of duty. The most they can share is that a teacher is on leave, but they will not disclose disciplinary efforts going on. That would be inappropriate.
Well, no, I understand that. But is there ever any notification that a change in your class, your child's classroom instruction has changed? There's a...
All that would do is gender additional questions. If there's an investigation going on, they're very limited. And quite often, it's not a lengthy period of time. I regret that it's been that long. I'll certainly look into the details for you. But if you disclose that, all you get essentially would be more questions for details, which we cannot disclose. So, in most instances, they would just say that an employee is on leave.
So, it's possible that in just this situation, it wasn't handled as...
I'd be happy to look into the details.
Clearly and positively as it should have or could have been.
It's quite possible. We'll be happy to look into it.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Gordon?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my oversight on this, I really do thank you for passing this out to us every week. And I thank you for working with the superintendent and deleting the February 5th student and employee due process and the discipline alternatives, I call Mr. Roach alternatives, that we really need to find something with. But we did not reschedule it. So, if you could get with the superintendent for us and make sure that those are two very important topics, that we can reschedule it so that when we meet with the Code of Student Conduct Committee, that, you know, we would have some other alternatives that we might be able to present. Okay? Thank you. I just wanted to make a note of that. We did delete it because we found it last night. We didn't have enough information, and we will not have enough information. And we have an open invitation to the New Beginning School in Kissimmee. And Dr. Jenkins is making arrangements, I think, with her staff to go. So, if the board members could not get together, they may want to join Dr. Jenkins and her staff because they are interested. She said, just because we are canceling the meeting, that they want to still come and see it for themselves, and then they'll have something more to present to this board. But it is open to the board members, if I'm not mistaken, right, Dr. Jenkins? Because they are planning for you to come anyhow. But it is an open invitation, so at your convenience. And you can come one-on-one. You can come in a group or whatever. My principal is, open the door. I don't know why, but, you know, because you know where I am. And Whitty and Eileen knows, and Dr. Lawson. But you are welcome. But I think she's planning that, and if you can come with her, and it will be during the day which is convenient for most of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. I know Mrs. McGill is coordinating that on behalf of the board as well.
Oh, very good.
So, a number of board members' schedule permitting, I'll try to make it at least.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, did you have something to add?
Just that, I guess we will have to coordinate because obviously, there's a concern about Sunshine. Because you are in this one, you are going to be meeting in a location where you're going to be looking at...
That's a good point.
You know, so it may have to be spaced out, Ms. Gordon. So, we'll have to make sure we reach a concord with your principal and be able to reach that and, you know, and work an understanding with her. Let's put it that way.
All right. And if you get Ms. McGill, she can, you know, post that for us, and that helps us out also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson?
Also, I know we addressed this two weeks ago at our board reading, and I noticed that the date hasn't been changed yet. And I guess, Ms. McGill and I talked today, that it's because the K-8 that's scheduled for March 19th, I know I will not be here, and I believe Ms. Gould and Ms. Cadel will not be here. And that's a pretty important one.
That's a very important one.
And so, we might have to start looking at some Mondays. We're going to all be in Tallahassee.
Well, actually, let's do this. We'll continue to rejigger this schedule. I don't want to really say this because I don't want to chew them all up, but we actually found out today after we reworked the schedule, we have three or four open dates on Tuesdays and Thursdays between now and summer. So, we'll just cancel that date and we'll move it to a different date.
Okay.
Because frankly, I want as many from not just the K-8 on the tutoring and the counseling programs, but the K-8.
The February 5th, they got canceled. Could we move it to that, or is that too soon? Nobody will be ready.
I don't... Let me... I've learned not to commit at the table until I talk to folks. I will tell you, board members, I'm going to try to work with the superintendent's team to structure that work session so we figure out how to make decisions with as much finality as possible on K-8s. I don't want to just keep hanging out there because we have a lot of folks in the community, even if they're contingent decisions contingent upon this event happening or that event happening and funding. But I think it would help, and I think frankly, and he has not said this to me, so I'm putting words in his mouth, but I just got to think it would help the facilities department as well to know where K-8s are going because there is long-range planning that needs to go on as well. So, that is the purpose of that work session, is to get down, nail down the K-8 plan, where we're going to do them, how we're going to do them, what schools we're going to look at consolidating. Ms. Cadel?
Couple of things. The first one is in regards to taking a field trip. There was a Sunshine violation case filed against the Martin County School Board. Three of them got on a bus, went to look at a high school program. There was a lot of discourse in the community, and I haven't heard the final findings on it. But that's not something that we really want to even open ourselves up to because if it has not been... It should have been decided, but it may not. But it... One of the citizens filed a Sunshine violation on those three school board members. One of them's no longer on the board. She chose not to run again, and I'm not quite sure the status of the other two board members. So, I, for one, will not be taking a bus with any of my fellow school board members. Love you guys dearly, but not going down that road. Second, as much as I've enjoyed being home for as long as I've been home, it looks like I'm on the road again. So, I, you know, Joseph and Deborah and the superintendent will always know where I am, but things are getting crazy again. On Thursday night, if for some crazy reason we're not done by 6:15, 6:20, I have to leave because the Executive Committee of Florida School Boards Association is in town. As the Executive Committee of, and I always get this goofed up, but I think I've got it right. I think it's the League of Cities and the Association of Counties and the Florida School Boards Association. All three of those groups meet together prior to the legislative session, coming up with statements that all three groups can agree on. One of them is local control. There's going to be some serious discussion about pensions. Where the Florida School Boards Association is on the pension issue is a little bit different than where some of the cities are and some of the counties. And a lot of it has to do with retirement benefit packages for fire and police. So, I don't know that there'll be agreement on that. But on Friday morning, we're meeting from 10 to 3:30, I think. So, once again, my duties will be picking up again. As I told them when I was up there last week, the good news is that the second week in June, I'm past president, and Patty will be traveling a lot. So, I have enjoyed the opportunity to serve. It kind of, it kind of sometimes tugs on my heartstrings that I'm not here doing, you know, hearing some of the information you are. But hopefully, I'm doing a lot of good for the greater good in my travels. So, thank you for understanding.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Cadel. Mr. Rodriguez, did you have some, or is that old? Okay. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes. And this is in, I think, Mrs. Moore and Ms. Robinson and more than likely, well, Dylan Thomas, Superintendent Jenkins, and Darrell Flynn and I had an opportunity to share from Joey Kettle's experience in her life with her family. We were... She was honored at the Winter Park Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year.
All right.
It was a big deal. It was a big deal. And what made it so nice, they were looking for you too, Mrs. Soblet, but they really recognized Ms. Cadel, her family, her accomplishment. They left out a lot of stuff. And they should have asked us, and we could have given them more. But it was one of the best affair that we've been to as a group together. And I'm going to let my other colleagues, but we were very proud of Joey and her accomplishment. That's a huge accomplishment to get in Winter Park. And to be Citizen of the Year, standing ovation. Joey, we are very proud of you, and your legacy will live on. So, Darrell and Christine, and I know Nancy may want to say something, but, and Dr. Jenkins, it was a wonderful event, and we're proud of you.
Kat, when you say, I shared with my family, you know what my dad wanted to know?
What?
They didn't mention that you were the event chair for the Making Strides Against Cancer Walk and that you've had 65,000 walkers and you've raised over $1.3 million for cancer research. And I said, Daddy, it's not their fault. I've been so busy, I haven't updated my bio. So, if I don't tell anyone what I did, there's no way they're going to know. So, I did it on LinkedIn tonight, last night, and within the next week, I'll update that. But that's what Dad said. He didn't say anything about cancer research. I was like, well, you told me I was going to speak too long, and then when I got done, he said it was too short. And I was like, well, I guess that's a good way to leave them.
Well, you know what else that really shocked me? They were giving her accolades, and I know Darrell's going to jump in, and they got to say something because we were just excited. But they never mentioned that you chaired twice the school board as a chairman, that we elected you twice to be chair of the school board. So, it was so much left out, but it was so much put in. But your speech was just elegant. So, we want to thank Dylan Thomas for writing... I'm just kidding. But it was just a wonderful affair. And I know Darrell wants to say something, and Nancy and Christine.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Uh, Ms. Moore?
No, it really was a wonderful time. I still remember, Ms. Cadel, your dad saying how proud he was of you and your mom telling me how you had volunteered since you were a young little thing. And, but some of the previous award winners were Lieutenant Governor Tony Jennings, Speaker... Help me out.
John Micah.
Yeah, well, Congressman John Micah, Speaker Dean Cannon. And so, she was really in a long list of illustrious people from Winter Park. So, it really was quite an honor for her. So, congratulations, Mrs. Cadel.
Ms. Flynn? Ms. Flynn.
Well, I want to give my congratulations too. It was, it was very well-deserved. You represented us well. I think when someone, especially like you, gets, you know, honored for all that they do, you know, it helps. A little bit of that rubs, flows over to us, so we can bask in your, in your light. So I thank you for that. You made us all look really good out there. But, you know, I have to say, what was really neat, it was at Full Sail, and there, Full Sail Live. And so it was this big room that looks like it's sort of a multi-purpose production room. But there was this huge digital screen in the back that had her name. It was like from, from our floor to the ceiling, and it was back there. And if you haven't seen the picture, it was pretty cool. So, you know, Joey, congratulations. I was really proud of you up there, and just thank you for all you do, and, you know, for sharing it with us. So thank you.
Well, what a wonderful evening, congratulations. Ms. Cadel, and thank you for making us look so good.
And can I say one other thing to the staff members that took their Friday night off to come? Thank you so much. It meant so much to me. And one of the biggest surprises was the Winter Park Health Foundation had bought a table, and they had a part of the Winter Park Consortium of Principals. They asked the principals that I represent that go to Winter Park High School if they would come. And only one of them was missing, and she was out of town, but all of my principals were there. And that meant so much that they came on a Friday night after a busy week. And my very good friend, Dr. Gordon in the back, who, he even got a plug for giving me the Lifetime Wildcat Award for the very first time in the history of the award. So thank you to all of you.
Dr. Jenkins.
I certainly want to add my congratulations here during our meeting. We conveyed that already to Ms. Cadel. I have to tell you, we just call her Superwoman for the things that she has accomplished and the personal challenges that she has overcome. We are just amazed, and certainly her parents were extremely proud that night. And I think the attendance on a Friday night of those principals and staff just speaks to the high regard and the level of respect they have for Ms. Cadel. And thank you for your service to the children of Orange County Public Schools and to this community.
Thank you.
Amen. Ms. Flynn.
Well, again, congratulations, Joey. But I want to tell you about another really neat experience that I had last, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. I participated in two Martin Luther King parades, and I had such a good time, but I want to tell you how I participated. I have a convertible, and I was the driver for Ms. Kat Gordon and Superintendent Jenkins.
Driving Ms. Daisy.
And we just had a ball. Kat coordinated our outfits, and we were the head of the parades. And I just, I just had a wonderful time, but I wanted to say that OCPS was represented in grand style in two parades.
Darrell was the head of the parade, right, Dr. Jenkins? They didn't see us. They saw the car and Darrell Flynn in this leather jacket.
All right. Well, on that visual imagery, we are adjourned.